And who do we have apologising? That'd be Izzy or Georgia? Izzy?
And yes, I've got apologies from councillor Moreland. And I think that was all Georgia. Obviously councillor Hader. Unless he turns up.
Yeah.
Sorry Chair, sorry, I was just going to say councillor Walraven has messaged to say she's lost her internet. So she's trying to connect. So she'll be back as soon as she can be.
Yeah, she was here briefly before the start of the reflection. So let's hope that she can be back with us before too long. So this may be councillor Walraven rejoining and councillor Richard Honeyman, I think is on the way in. So while that's happening, we come to item two, which is disclosure of interests. To deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosable pecuniary interests and interest other than pecuniary interests, as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and the Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. So does anyone want to disclose interests at this point? I don't see anybody signalling. So we're saying there are no interests to disclose. Okay, we now move on to item three. Public participation to deal with any questions or brief representations from members of the public in accordance with the Seaford Town Council policy and the local authorities and police and crime panels, coronavirus flexibility for local authority and police and crime panel meetings, England and Wales Regulations 2020. They could do with, I should put some commas into that. So I see Penny Lower indicating to speak. I don't see any other member of the public wanting to speak. Okay, Penny Lower.
Thank you. Yes, I suppose if I have to identify an agenda item, it's probably number six of Lewis District councillors. What I want to bring up is the Seaford Health Hub. It's a great concern to me. What I'd like to know from Seaford Town Council, who I know are not responsible for providing the health hub, but I would hope they would have some influence and some say on the matter. What I want to ask is, was the council, either officers or councillors, involved or consulted in any way with the viability study to establish whether the health hub could be built on the Dain Road site? So was there any consultation or involvement? And whether Seaford Town Council was involved or not, has the council seen the viability study? Does the council know if any progress is being made on planning for a new health hub, whether in Dain Road or anywhere else? My concerns are that there seems to have been very little consultation or involvement with the surgeries themselves. Whatever is claimed by LDC or anyone else, including our MP, I understand there was very, very little consultation, if any. The viability study doesn't seem to be in the public domain. And I would like to know how a build at Dain Road would be paid for. It is going to have a vast cost. And what will the surgery that serves 18,000 patients do during the two years that a construction would take if it ever went ahead? I'd like clarification about when the lease on the old school surgery ends and what happens with that. I have contacted Lewis District councillors, a number of them. A couple, only a couple replied very politely, but I'm afraid with a sort of metaphorical shrug of the shoulders, who knows? And I just don't think this is good enough. I really think we are in danger of losing an enormously good GP service in the town if something is not done about this. And Covid or not, we can't just let it sit back and do nothing about it. So that is what I wanted to bring up with the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I refer to Isabel first of all? In the, I think clearly it will be helpful, I think Penny, if we could have that as a letter at some point because there's so much to it. But in terms of the overarching point, have we been consulted and what do we know?
Quite simply, I'm not aware that we've been consulted at this time. I haven't received anything. But again, it's not, it's, I'm not sure what role that would have come under. So I wonder whether any of the district councillors might be able to answer if they know any more than that.
So district councillors, someone like to come in on this one? I think both district councillors have got their eyes down at the moment, but councillor Borman.
Yeah, thank you. The viability study isn't, anything isn't in owned by Lewis District Council, it's owned by the CCG. So we aren't allowed to give that out to anyone. Only the CCG can give permission for that. So it's them who would have to be contacted about the viability study. With regards to funding, obviously that's down to NHS properties and CCG in order to find the funding to go ahead with any building work that they require on the Dain Road site.
So anyone else, any of the other councillors have anything to add? From maybe anything you've found out in other, in other places that you sit to represent the council? Councillor Edson?
Yeah, the only thing I can say is that when they were making up their mind to not go to the Downs, they didn't take into consideration the report of the working party at Seaford. And as far as I'm aware, that's as far as it's gone.
So Penny, I think we are struggling to answer your question in any kind of detail on the basis, we don't, it isn't that we don't can't, won't answer, we can't answer, we don't have the information you're asking for. I think councillor Borman has suggested a couple of places that you might ask again, but I'm assuming you've already done, you've already asked in those spaces. I think that the, I think all I can, clearly there's nothing, we can't answer your question tonight. I think my suggestion is if you might like to put that into, into a note to me or to the, to the acting town clerk, we could consider how we might, it would be helpful for us to have the answers to those questions for ourselves. I think if you could put them into writing, we can see if we could find some answers again for ourselves. But I'm sorry, I regret that we're not able to give you answers. We don't actually have them. So. So it's good that you flagged up the issues with us, but there's literally nothing we can do with this tonight. But we will try to be helpful in the days going forward. So thank you for flagging this. In terms of, I think that Penny Lower may be the only member of the public in the gallery, as I see. So that's probably public participation complete. Well, sorry, complete makes it head of it. That's the end of it, but it's clearly not complete. We've got issues we will try to follow on from here. And let's go on now to agenda item four and the minutes of meetings. I think as we've done previously, probably best if the, the chair of the committee proposes them to be accepted. And so councillor Dunn, item 4.1, and there's a recommendation to be, I think to be put to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to propose the minutes as a full true representation of the meeting.
And just to check about the item CS 14.3. Is it by, by accepting these as a proper record of the meeting, are we implicitly then accepting that recommendation as well? Looking at Izzy at this point.
Yes, yeah, sorry, that's just a simple answer, but yes.
Right, okay. So councillor Dunn's proposed it, someone to second? Anyone? Right, there's two hands going up now. Councillor Walraven's first, all I can see. I think we just put, yes, so we accept this. Can you please indicate? Councillor Argent? Okay, we're agreeing these are, they're approved as minutes, those meeting minutes are approved. Okay, going over to 4.2, the full council meeting minutes of the 20th of August and the 10th of September. I could propose from the chair that they, they be accepted. Someone, someone second this. Councillor Borman, okay, those in favour, please show.
I may be just ask at this point, we've got a few cameras off. Yeah, it would be really good when we're voting if cameras could come back on just for the vote. Or if you're unable to put your camera on, maybe indicate in the chat function to say that we've got that record.
Yes, good point. Can we just put with councillor Adil and councillor Honeyman, are you hearing this and are you able to vote in this?
Hello Chair, as you, as you're well aware, you don't actually have to have video on all the time. As part of the emergency rules from the coronavirus.
Ah yes, but the point is about voting, that's my point.
Oh yeah, no, it's okay for doing this, absolutely.
Yes, yeah. Okay, I think we're saying that everybody's voting now. Good, okay, let's move on to 4.3. Councillor Brown, can you propose the F and GP minutes? Councillor Brown, you've got, you're muted.
And 4.4, if I may.
Yes, 4.3 and 4.4, someone second those two? Okay, everybody indicating yes. Okay, so, so we're saying that we didn't get someone to second that, but in terms of, so it's proposed, someone should have seconded it. So who seconded this? Okay, councillor Argent, okay, let's go for that vote again. It's been proposed, seconded, voted, two together, F and GP and golf in the view. Okay, that's carried. Okay, 4.5 councillor Edson for Personnel Committee?
Yes, I'd like to move at the minutes of the personnel meeting on the 3rd of September, be accepted by the council.
Someone to second that. Okay, councillor Cash, those in favour? Okay. Planning highways, there's three sets of minutes councillor Walraven?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to move that the planning and highways minutes are accepted by the council.
Okay, someone to second that. Okay, councillor Borman, all those in favour, please show. That's all, that's carried. Councillor Honeyman, are you voting? Okay, so there's issue, right, everybody's voting. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the end of agenda item four. And now moving on to agenda item five. And in your minutes, we are now on page five. So page six is the actual report. And I think as mayor, I should say that I'm getting quite a lot of experience of hangouts and of Zooms and lots of virtual, lots of virtual meetings, both within the council and outside. So I'm getting to be slowly a bit more familiar with this. There have been one or two face-to-face engagements, but socially distanced face-to-face outdoors. The, the mayor's Facebook is busy this year because a lot of the things that would have happened face-to-face are now virtual. The, the mayor's I know, I know I've not chosen charities this year, but there is a mayor's charities initiative and charities that are and not-for-profit organisations are listing with the charities initiative. We're up to 24, 25 charities and not-for-profit organisations listing. So if you know of charities, not-for-profit organisations, it doesn't necessarily mean registered charities who could benefit, then please do get them to first of all list themselves with us for the raising of their social profile. And then the opportunity to join in a fundraising event when we're permitted to have one, hopefully in the spring of next year. The other very busy posting has been the Seaford Secret Gardens. And I'd like to thank the deputy mayor councillor Cash for all of the work she put into that. And that has been a very, very well-received initiative. A lot of people have commented, they'd like to see the smaller gardens they perhaps wouldn't have visited had, you know, because they wouldn't have been open. So I think I'd like to be a virtual mayor for the whole of this virtual year. And I think that's the shape of things. So we just have to adapt to that. And I'm looking forward to having some events, but clearly social distancing is something of a challenge. So we have the report at page six and then the actual diary entries on page seven. Councillor Brown, swing his hand up?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the mayor on managing to be so busy over this very difficult period. Well done.
Thank you councillor Brown. All right, applause and councillor Rutland, very welcome, thank you very much. Okay, I think we can move on at that point. We would have had a item 5B, which is a verbal report by the young mayor. Has the young mayor, is it?
Just want to say the young mayor's not here tonight. We have had apologies from the deputy young mayor as well, just to note that as well. And the only thing I just wondered if I could just pass on is that you've obviously may have seen that the young mayor did take part in a charity bike ride. It's just to say that she's raised, I think, over £700 now. So that's obviously a fantastic fundraising activity. And she's then looking to do more things. So we'll just keep passing that information out via the town council session and to you all as well.
Yeah, she's, again, it's not easy for her either. So it's good that she's able to make some progress. Councillor Dunn?
Can we please, if it's possible, in our minutes, acknowledge the good work that she's doing? It's always an encouragement to the young people that we as the council and councillors and officers are behind her and supporting her. If that's possible, please.
Yes, and she's also coping with an unexpected situation. She's now got a good school place in Lewis. And that's something she hadn't expected to happen when she became young mayor. So to cope with that and to be doing things successfully are praiseworthy. So yes, thank you councillor Dunn. That's a good proposal. Okay, so we now move on to item six and the district councillor updates. So we've had a little of this in the response to Penny Lower. Anything else to add? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, the only thing I've got to add is the Lewis District Council is giving Seaford Leisure a loan to help them over this time, which we'll see with Seaford Leisure Centre to help support them to stay open and remain open for foreseeable future.
And I think that's a good precedent in terms of they could lend them half a million, they should be able to help us. The, moving, I attended a Lewis District Covid response seminar yesterday, which was interesting and business-like. One of my hangout experiences. So anything else to say as a district councillor update? Nobody else signalling? No. Okay, we now come to item seven. And we are now, if it's like page nine minutes, we're now on page page eight. For some reason, my page eight didn't print. Okay. Item seven then, to consider the report 7020 presenting the details of Lewis and Eastbourne Council's consultation on the Public Spaces Protection Order. So who's going to present for this?
I'm happy just to introduce it. Sorry Chair, if you want me to. I mean, obviously you can see from the report, it's quite self-explanatory. And the survey or the consultation's quite basic in terms of its response. So yeah, you can see I've put in a, like a draft response and it's just whether the councillors agree. I would like to make any additions to that, so that I can, I can input that tomorrow.
So on page eight, we have recommendations. The council has recommended to consider the response drafted by officers to the Lewis and Eastbourne Council's consultation on the possible extension of the current PSPOs. And the second recommendation to instruct officers to submit the response on behalf of the town council. So who would like to speak to this? I see councillor Dunn, councillor Borman. Councillor Honeyman, councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Under the PSPO 1.5, it really only relates to us for dog fowling. But obviously reading the detail, there is obviously different types of antisocial behaviour. And one of them is excessive drinking on seafronts or in open spaces. Now, I know Eastbourne probably may be in a bigger town suffer that. I was just wondering whether we could ask of the ask of that, what, do we, do we as a town suffer excessive alcohol abuse in our open spaces? I know it's not in our PSPO, but it would be, I think it would be interesting for us as a council to know exactly what we're dealing with. And we hear reports of drinking in the crouch and drug-taking, but I don't know how far it goes.
Perhaps we'll take these three questions together and then see, we can, maybe there'll be a similar answer. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you. There's actually only been one prosecution under this PSPO order throughout the last three years. So is it effective? Has it lessened things happening? Or do the Lewis District Council need to start making better enforcements with it, especially with the dog fowling?
Okay, so Olivia Honeyman?
I was actually going to say what Sylvia has done, bring up the same point. So I won't repeat what Sylvia has already done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, perhaps Izzy, would you respond on the generalities of those three?
Yeah, I mean, obviously at this stage, the only sort of thing I knew about them was that we've been sent this consultation. And then obviously I've had to look through. So I'm more than happy to ask the question and look into a little bit more detail on how they're put in place and what sort of data is gathered before they're put in place and that sort of thing. At the moment for this item, obviously, just to respond to the consultation, I haven't much more to add apart from, let's see, if the councillors want to look into more about councillor Borman's comment on whether we feed that back in some way.
Yes, I think if there are, if there are orders without any kind of enforcement or review, then they will be, they will not be effective. I think that would be a useful thing to feed back. Councillor Cash, sorry.
I was just going to say exactly the same thing. The fact that there's only been one complaint in three years says everything. Because I think the, it has been, fowling in our area has definitely got worse lately. And it always seems to get worse in the winter months when there are nice dark evenings when people don't have to bother to pick up. So I can't see the, at any point in extending areas or bigger fines or anything like that, unless there's some kind of true enforcement that goes alongside it. It's just a joke, I think otherwise. So I don't know if you can put that in nicer words as well.
Okay, councillor Richard Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just the point about from, obviously from the Covid 19 from March situation, where they're actually working, the PSPOs, or where they're deployed, redeployed, do something else? Can we find that out as well? Because, because we don't know if they were actually, if these last seven months were actually covered by virus.
Yeah, we can ask the question. So anyone else? Councillor Meek?
In regards to dog fowling, the thing that drives me crazy is the fact that a lot of people seem to think that if they pick up their dog fowlings and put them in a plastic bag and leave the plastic bag, they seem to think that that's their duty done. And to me, personally, I know it won't be the same for a lot of people, but personally, I would prefer they just left it there and not put it in a plastic bag. Because, you know, a bit of rain, it's going to go away anyway. But, but to have plastic all over the place with dog refuse in it is, for me, anathema to the whole idea of clearing it up in the first place.
Yeah, I support councillor Meek. I go on walks of high and over, he were hanging bags of dog waste on the trees. You think, why? So okay, I think if we've had the discussion on this, we come back to the recommendations. So one is to consider the response, which we've done. And the other is to instruct officers to submit the response on behalf of the town council. So Isabel?
All right, I just wonder if I could come in, if I just go back to obviously the response that I've drafted. Which is on page, just trying to scroll through here. Page nine, just the next page. So in that first question where they're asking how effective they are, I just wondered whether anyone had a proposal of whether we wanted to change that response that I've drafted? Just going by what some of the comments have been, I wonder whether that is the response.
I think it would be useful to have a comment in there, raising the point about enforcement or at least having eyes on what's happening. But I think that to have orders without, I take councillor Richard Hyman's point that there may have been less ability to do any enforcement because of social isolation and lockdown. But I think going forward, if we are, as we, as these are to be extended over several years, someone needs to be resourcing this so that they can be effective, whether it's in dog fowling or public drinking or whatever. Okay, so Olivia Honeyman?
I've been trying to work out whether I should say this or not because it's quite disgusting, but I think I might, anyway, I'm going to just add this in. I was contacted by a resident a couple of months ago, who was very concerned about the amount of human waste that was being left behind at places like High and Over. I'm not sure if that's something, because obviously when there's a lack of toilets being open, there's a lot more parcels being left apparently in different places. So I don't know whether, obviously we're talking about dog fowling, whereas I've had residents contacting me about human fowling. So I'm not sure if that's something that, that's why I'm in two minds whether to mention it or not. But I know it's something that is concerning quite a lot of dog walkers.
I'm assuming that's also a public health issue. It's not about public space, open space. It's about public health in terms of human excrement. But who would we pass this concern on to county council, public health or Izzy?
Put my hand up, I'm not volunteering, so I take that on. And I was just, just to add on that, obviously we've been made aware of the same situation. So we've been in contact with those at Lewis District Council. And we've also got people doing certain cleaning in areas like beach huts and things to remove what is thought to be that sort of waste. But yeah, I think, again, it's one of those things where we could maybe just explore a little bit further. If it ends up being that it is going to be a continued problem, we can obviously explore where there might be some sort of enforcement there. But at this, at this point, obviously it's not been included in this consultation because they're talking about the ones that they already have in place at the moment.
But I think it's also a reality for people doing beach cleans as well in terms of some of the, you know, they've got to be more careful about, not so much the safety, but their own health in terms of some of the places they go to get while doing litter picks. I see councillor Honeyman again. If anybody who's not spoken previously wants to speak. Okay, councillor Olivia Honeyman?
I was just going to come back and say I did, I have spoke to Tony about, Tony Jackson, about this when the resident initially raised it with me. So to say the officers are aware of this. And he did go up to High and Over at about 6.30 in the morning, I think. And speak to some of the people up there. So I know the office have been of this, but I just thought I'd raise it in this particular moment.
Yeah, yeah, it's relevant to the town or the residents of the town. Councillor Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just looking at the statements that the officers or Isabel has put forward from 1.7, sorry, 1.7.1 and trying to put in the additional wording that supports what we've, so I've got to they raise an awareness of how not to behave in those areas which will more than likely prevent some antisocial behaviour of those who are more considerate and cautious. Then to add, however, the lack of convictions, questions on how effective the current PCS, PSPs are. I don't know if anyone else can add any more on to that? Is that a start?
I think probably it's the lack of enforcement leads to the lack of convictions, one leads to the other. So.
Lack of enforcement, yeah, we can put however the lack of enforcement. What was it leads?
Would therefore lead on to fewer convictions or few convictions?
On to fewer convictions, yes.
And then I think then it goes on with the paragraph as it's written now.
Okay, if everyone's happy with that, well, that's what I'd like to propose.
Isabel, you content with that?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm fine. That's, that's, that's fine.
Okay, I think that's it then. I think, okay, we move to the recommendation.
Well, bloody sorry, I'm going to need a second for that proposal.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, councillor Rutland, okay, let's go that proposal first before we go to the other recommendations. So that's a proposal for an addition to the text in item 1.7.1. Are we all content with that? Please indicate. Okay, now we go back to the actual recommendations of the report. I think we might take these two together. Would someone like to propose the two and then we go for seconding that? Councillor Borman proposes, councillor Dunn seconds. All those in favour? Is everybody voting? Councillor Nizish, you're, you're voting, right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of item seven. Okay, we now go to item eight. And this is the, the meeting timetable. So now we're on page 13 of your papers. And the recommendations is that we should adopt the 2020, 21 to 2022 meeting timetable as presented. And to approve that in council, and to approve that in consultation with the relevant chairs, amendments may be made to the meeting timetable by the proper officer where justified and required, ensuring that amendments may be made to the meeting timetable by the proper officer where justified and required, ensuring that where possible, this does not reduce the number of full council or committee meetings held during the 21, 22 municipal year. So the, the timetable is there appended after page 14. Any questions, comments, queries? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to propose an amendment to recommendation two, that the wording where possible is removed from that sentence. There's no reason to decrease the number of meetings during the year. But, you know, I don't see that's necessary. And it also appears again in item 112.
Okay, so shall we move that one fir-, well, let's see if there are any other changes. Who was, councillor Borman, you're signaling to speak.
I was going to propose that we accept the calendar.
Okay, so we're coming up, so just, I think we have a proposal that needs to be seconded for those two changes in the text, remove the reference to that word, remove the words that where possible in two places in the text. That's proposed by councillor Brown, someone second that. Councillor Rutland seconds that, those in favour? Please show. Councillor Hydrer, ah, okay, I think that's everyone in favour, I think no one against, no one abstaining, that's carried. And does anyone want to discuss anything else about either the, the information presented or the the timetable itself, the calendar itself? No, I think we're, we're content with that. So I think we now have the proposal from councillor Brown that the the timetable as presented is adopted.
Sorry, the proposal was from councillor Borman.
Oh, sorry, I apologize, councillor Borman. Okay, we need to have that, I think.
I'll second it then.
Okay, right, councillor Borman, councillor Brown seconding that. Okay, so we're now, this is item number, item one, that we adopt the meeting timetable as proposed. So those in favour? Okay, that's everyone, that's carried. And item, the recommendation two is now revised to remove the words that where possible, is, that, is, try again. Item, recommendation two is revised to remove that where possible from there. And yeah, that's, yeah, from that recommendation. So can we have a proposal that that revised recommendation is what we're going to vote on? Someone?
I think we've already, I think we voted on that.
I'm not sure, Mr Mayor, I think we've already voted on this.
I think we voted on that proposal first and then we took councillor Borman.
I think, I was, I was assuming we voted on changing the text rather than voting on the recommendation. Okay, for the avoidance of doubt, let's say that we've, it's been proposed and seconded that item two with that revision is carried. Can we vote again just to make, make clear that we know what we're, that I know what we're voting on this time? Okay, those in favour, please show. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to item nine, and this is page 16. The Christmas shutdown. Izzy, would you like to say anything in advance of this?
I haven't got any more to add than what's on the report, so just welcome to any questions from councillors.
Thank you. So the recommendations here that we agree to the closure of the town council office, town council office activities from 4:30 on the 18th of December to 9:30 AM on Monday the 4th, and that we note the emergency contact arrangements as per the report for the, during the above closure period. So any questions about the, the closure period or the contact arrangements, councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the staff worked very hard in the circumstances they find themselves in and I see this as being a sort of a reward for the staff to have an extended Christmas break. I therefore propose that we accept the recommendation. One and two.
Councillor Webb? Sorry, councillor Webb, I think you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I was just seconding that.
Okay, councillor Edson, I think you had your hand up.
I was just, yeah, I was just seconding as well.
Yeah, I've got one, one point, request one piece of information that I've already flagged up to Izzy. I think it'll be helpful to define what urgent means, because what may be urgent for one may not be urgent for everybody. Perhaps Izzy, could you give us a couple of examples of urgent and non-urgent, or what would, might be urgent?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to. I mean, I think for non-urgent to start with, I mean, in terms of general calls that we get at the office anyway, you've always got the odd, you know, my bin hasn't been collected, or, you know, the postman's delivered me the wrong post, things like that. And those, those are calls that quite often come into us. So what would happen is that they would go to the view, the view have got a nice list of where they can send people. So if someone phones up and says my bin hasn't been collected, they can quite easily say that they need to get in contact with Lewishamshire Council. So that's just our way of continuing to be helpful like we usually do. And in terms of an emergency, just as an example, one year a tree came down in the crouch, so of course that was something that needed urgent assistance. So that, that meant that someone at the view or whoever was covering at the time was able to get in contact with one of the officers that needed to be there to make sure that the area was safe. So, I mean, urgency or emergency is always where safety is involved, really.
Okay, I think if you saw that, have that clarification. Councillor Richard Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, in relation to what Isabel just said, outside issues, so in previous years, are there in previous years, are there a standard check that someone does on a daily basis, even, even throughout the, there's a few people should really turn their mics off, it'd be better really. Can you force some, can you force the mics off? That's great. Dave, Dave Ardern's still on, says Lindas. Right, I'll start again. In previous, previous years, there's a standard route which some of, some of from community services goes around to the properties of the town council, like the crouch, as you just mentioned, the seafront, you know, like the martello fields, the, you know, all the standard toilets and the seafront, just to make sure there's no vandalism on a daily basis and then do the necessary, because if we're expecting more lockdowns and people are going to be off longer periods, we could end up with the seafront being a very, very busy place and what we actually basically own ourselves. So I just wondered if you've got anything in mind for some sort of rotor where that, those particular staff will, will keep an eye on that on a daily basis. Thank you very much.
Hey, Isabel?
Yeah, just to say, I mean, at the moment, on a normal week or a normal day, they're not checked every day. So I'm not sure why we would. I mean, we've got a schedule of inspections that the inspector follows, and it's like an annual planner. So I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure why we would do that as an additional thing over the Christmas period.
Can I come back just quickly? Yes, because obviously i- if nothing's going to be touched for about two weeks and something, there's an issue there, I suppose it could, doesn't, doesn't give the town a very good image, does it, basically, if you can't do absolutely nothing for a very long period of time? I just, well, I just wonder what happened in the previous years, I suppose it just, or do you wait to the, to the first, first working day in January?
Can I just say, I think the examples of this could be if there was storm damage or there'd been a burglary, we would have to wait for someone else to report that unless we've got a way to be watching for these things, for example.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what to say in terms of it's the same as it would be now or over a weekend. It's just, it would, there's not much difference in terms of then just being over the Christmas period.
I think all we can say then is that it will be useful for the, for all of us councillors to be watchful in our own places and to report what we see if it's urgent. Does anyone else want to come in on this?
Can I just come back quickly, just very quickly, Mr Mayor? Obviously, the partnerships like the principal councils have probably got a bit more members of staff on duty, haven't they? So they would possibly get involved.
I think the, we can commit officer time while giving them holiday, and I think we have to restrict what's on offer. And that I think all we can do is to, if amongst the councillor group we see things happening and some of us that live in, in and around the town, we use this reporting procedure. And if there's something that's truly urgent, you know, a tree is down or the beach hut's blown over, then there's an emergent, an urgent, an urgent, there's the urgency that will be responded to. But I think beyond that, we can put things in place because we don't, we want to give our officers time off. So I think that's as much as we're able to do. I think on that base, councillor Meek?
Just a point of information, I mean, I absolutely concur that, you know, that some of the officers have been working enormously hard through the last six months.
I think we need to say all, all the officers have been working enormously hard. I think, careful with the summer.
Well, I understood, Mr Mayor, that some of them are on furlough, so they're not allowed to be working.
Okay, good point, keep going.
I just wonder, are some of them coming back off furlough? Is it the end of this month? Or what's the situation with the officers who've been furloughed?
Isabel?
I'm going to bat that straight over to Georgia.
Georgia?
Thank you, Izzy. Yeah, so just through you, Chair, just to say, we don't really have many staff members that are furloughed still. Most have come back, especially at the view, most of the staff are now working their full hours because there's the demands there and they're able to do their full hours. In the offices, we do still have a couple of staff that are working part-time furlough. But as you've said, at the end of the month, that will end and people will be back on their full contracted hours. But we certainly have made good use of the scheme. I'm not quite sure on the finances, I don't know if Karen maybe has kind of a figure to come in with there or anything extra to say, but we have used the scheme as best as we can, I know.
There you go, Izzy, Georgia, Georgia, Karen, Karen, you're on.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know, to be honest, Chair, how much it totals up so far. It's probably something in the region of 50,000, it's quite substantial.
That's, sorry, you're saying that's 50,000 of income to us?
Yeah, it's quite substantial, the amount that we've been claiming, but it has reduced over the last few months.
Right, okay, we're, okay, we now, councillor Cash?
Just to go back to where we were about the phone calls, when you say that calls will be diverted, that's an automatic process will be set up. So it won't be an answer phone, it will be straight through to the view.
Yes, if I can take that, Chair. So yeah, we have got the ability to do that. So last year we just call forwarded, so it went through straight to the view. And if I could just carry on with, on that, it's just to also let you all know that it was hardly needed last year, just to, I know that we never know what's going to happen from one year to the next, as this year has shown us, but it's, it's usually a very, very quiet time and there's not usually an emergency where we've had to use the rotor that we've got in place, but we've got it in place just to make sure that we've got that back up.
Okay, right, we come back to the recommendations, we've already had this proposed and seconded. So we need, need to put the, the two recommendations as one together to the vote. So this was proposed by, this from my record, councillor Brown seconded, no, councillor Borman, councillor Brown.
Sorry, it was proposed by councillor Brown and then I think it was seconded by councillor Webb.
Right, okay, okay, right, that's in place. Those in favour, please show. That's everyone. So there's no, no one to vote against, no one to abstain, that's carried. Okay, thank you. We now go over to item 10, we're on page 18 of your packs. And the recommendation, we are, we are asked to consider whether or not to process the 2020 sickness bonus scheme as per town council policy. And I think I need to make the point from the chair, there are things that we might want to do but maybe not be able to do. But I'll open this up to the floor to, to hear some discussion about this. Councillor Brown? Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to consider mean or anything like that, but we're in a very difficult situation at the moment, money-wise with income etc. I also do think that we should reward staff as and where we can, but I think staff will get an increment this year anyway. I'd like to propose that we do not process that, this recommendation this year.
Okay, thank you, councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I was in real two minds. Yes, we really should be rewarding staff, especially at this current time, but I also agree with councillor Brown that this town council, the finances does need to, some help, so maybe not paying it is the thing to do. But I'm still in two minds. But one thing I'd like to know is how the money, if we did pay it, is how many of those have been on the furlough scheme? Does, if they've been on furlough, yes, they may have been sick, but so could have lost their bonus. So how, does that make any difference to it? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Meek then councillor Dunn, councillor Meek?
Sorry, I was going to second councillor Brown's suggestion.
Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, I would say, I don't know if the, the councillor or the councillors would agree that, I mean, I also support what councillor Brown and councillor Borman have said, and the seconded by councillor Meek. But could we just say that, you know, this is not, you know, indefinitely, that we would have to have a review of this maybe next year, so that, you know, it's not completely over with, you know, it's just in this period because we're in such a difficult, a difficult environment or a climate. So I wonder if that would be possible.
Councillor Brown?
Yes, it does actually say in the text, so you process the 2020 sickness bonus, it doesn't refer to any other years or anything.
Yeah, it is important to make that point, this is not something that will commit us going forward. Councillor Rutland, councillor Honeyman?
I just think it's, it says here the total contribution is £2,143, and that's, is that across all of the employees or is that per person?
Ask Karen that question.
It's across all of the council's employees, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Richard Honeyman?
Well, in that case, I'd just say, I think it's a bit penny pinching where it's not their fault that we've been in this situation. So I think that it should be paid.
Okay, good point. Councillor Richard Honeyman?
I'd recommend that, can we review this when the coronavirus pandemic's over? We can, then we can revise it maybe sometime in 2021. So, so when, when this, this period goes from, it doesn't say exactly what time date it was going for, because you talk about 2020 sickness bonus, but obviously we haven't finished 2020 yet, so I'm not, I quite can't, I don't know what the year is yet, that's not, that's not clear on the support when it runs from, so.
Okay, I see councillor Webb, councillor Edson, but I guess that's a point of clarification from Georgia. When it says the 2020 sickness bonus, which year are we in? Is it starting from April? Is this the 2021 year, the year we're in now?
No, we, we go, sorry, Chair, we go as close to the calendar year as we can in order to be able to pay the bonus in December. So it runs the 1st of December 2019 to the 30th of November 2020.
So current year, okay. Councillor Webb?
I just want to agree with Geoff really, I think it's for the sake of two grand, I think it's, we've seen this penny pinching on our, on our part. And I think we should pay it.
Okay, so Edson?
Yes, Mayor, I'd, I agree that councillor Rutland made a very good point there, and I totally agree with him. I just wonder if Karen has got any thoughts on, on that amount and how much it will affect our finances.
Okay, Karen?
Yes, Chair, I mean, my one comment would be, what one of the councillors has already brought up is because of the furlough scheme. So it could quite well be that some of the staff have been, that have been furloughed for a significant amount of time, could have been sick, but that wouldn't be recorded anywhere, so they would get the bonus scheme. Whereas staff that have been working full-time and still carried on working might have had the odd day sick and they wouldn't get it. And it seems a little bit unfair when the people that have been furloughed haven't been working. That's the side of, of the money. And obviously, we're just trying to make any savings that we can, really.
Okay, who's signaling to speak? Councillor Webb, Webb and the councillor Dunn?
Well, could we just, could we not just make it that, that we could do this scheme for those that have been working and discount the ones that have been furloughed?
Complicates things, I think. Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, I'd like to, because councillor Brown put in a proposal which I'd like to second.
I think that was seconded by councillor Meek, but.
Oh, right, okay, month's date, thank you.
I think we have to resolve this by way of a vote. I think we've got such a range of views now. I think we need to see what the majority feel. Anybody believe we shouldn't put this to the vote now? Okay, and in that case, the vote would be, what's, what's being proposed by councillor Brown, seconded by councillor Meek, is we would not pay the sickness bonus. is we would not pay the sickness bonus. So you're, you're clear now, we're voting on the proposal not to pay. If you understand that's the vote. I think we'll need to do this by roll call. Uh, to councillor Brown. So you're still muted? I think, you, you don't want to speak, right, okay. Uh, right, so I think we need to go for roll call. And if you vote yes, it means we're not going to pay. I'm sorry, it's a bit odd thing to say it's a negative vote, but we're voting not to pay. So we can have that by roll call, please.
Okay, um, so councillor Adil?
Uh, so you're voting yes?
For, could, could people say what they're voting?
Yeah, I think it's best to listen to say.
Four.
Four, four means not to pay, yeah, okay.
Councillor Arjun?
Four.
Councillor Borman?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
Or.
Councillor Cash?
For.
Councillor Dunn?
Or.
Councillor Edson?
Against.
Councillor Eddin? Oh, I didn't catch that.
Councillor Eddin again, please?
Against.
Councillor Hader?
For.
Sorry, bear with me a moment, I'm doing this electronically rather than written. Councillor Richard Honeyman?
For.
Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
For.
Councillor Meek?
For.
Councillor Reed?
For.
Councillor Rutland?
Against.
And councillor Will Raven?
Against.
Councillor Webb?
Against.
Okay, wait with me just a second, it's really difficult to see this on my screen. So that's, um, carried.
So I think I'd like to record that this is being done, not something we would choose to do, but something we feel we have to do, given the council's financial situation. It's not, and it's also, we made it very clear, only for this year. This is not intended to be, to be setting a precedent. Okay, thank you, we've resolved that one. So the, the decision is, um, not to have the scheme paid in, in this, in this twenty twenty year. Okay, thank you. Um, we now move on to item eleven. And I want to propose that we now exclude the press and the public from the meeting. Someone second that? Okay, councillor Adil, those in favour of that?
Sorry, Chair, um, I think there's, sorry, yeah, there's the additional item that was added on.
Sorry, where?
The polling stations.
We've got an email from, from Georgia to say that there's an amendment to this, this agenda, um, going in at, yeah, just before the eleven, oh, sorry, Georgia, you can explain.
So I, I don't have a copy of that one. So this was an email that came when?
Yes, sorry, I, I'm able to help if that's all right, Chair. Um, so we had a, um, a polling stations review, um, polling districts and polling places review, sorry, from Lewis District Council come in, um, that we felt needed to come to council. So it was added to the agenda and the agenda was, um, recirculated a week, I think it was last week. Uh, I don't know, Georgia, whether you're able to maybe share the screen, but.
Yeah, I think I picked up my copy from the office before this, so. Okay, so, yeah, so, so what are we being asked to do? What's the, what's the recommendation?
Do you want me to share the screen? Sorry, Chair.
Yes, please, yes.
Can you see the document? Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So I'm, I'm happy to introduce it. I mean, there was a, there's a review that Lewis District Council, um, they, they, that take place with the polling districts and polling, uh, polling places, sorry. Um, and they sent that review to us to, um, for us to comment. So it's a consultation.
And can we look further down to see what the response is? Is, is there, is there actual response?
I haven't put in a, a draft response on this one. Um, but there's, there's sort of four areas of the consultation that affect Seaford, they're in front of you, so A to D.
I think what we need then is comments really from the councillors for those wards in terms of are we, uh, what's our view on these proposed changes? Yes, minimise this so I can see more of you. Okay, so councillor Borman, councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I think especially Cradle Hill School not now being used as a polling station is a big plus for the town. Schools needed to be stopped using and they found alternatives. I saw, I could actually fully support this recommendation. Um, and at the last elections, when the Clinton Centre couldn't be used, they trialled St Thomas More Church and it worked like a success. So I think we should fully support this, the consultation for our area.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dunn?
Yeah, I completely agree with councillor Borman. Um, I cannot speak for C, but definitely for D, because I know somebody that actually did work up there as, um, an officer, um, dealing with the voting and, and the, the, um, the tent, the, the porter cabinet, the writers was absolutely dreadful. Um, it was just not, not, it didn't support anything. It was really bad. Not for people, the residents voting, but also for the staff that worked there. So I'd like to second councillor Borman's proposal that we accept these, these, uh, recommendations.
Okay, councillor Cash, then councillor Eddin?
Um, I wanted to query what the, what the cabin is that they're going to use instead. I wasn't clear about that because councillor Borman maybe suggested that's what they were using last time and it wasn't satisfactory. I'm not clear about that. What's the, what's the cabin?
Uh, okay, and let's go councillor Eddin, well, we think you've answered the cabin. Councillor Eddin?
So, um, the, as far as I know, the cabin was used and it was found not suitable. Um, so the, the, I'm the councillor for the North Ward and I, the, we do need the, the, split the polling stations because a lot of the, um, a lot of the residents there are not, are not happy with the, uh, polling situation. It's quite a large ward and quite well populated, so I, I'm happy with the, uh, with the report, with the recommendation.
Can I just say, I think that we, there's two cabins involved in this. One is the temporary porter cabin, put there just for the election. And the other is, um, a social welfare facility, a porter cabin owned or leased by Waves or Seaford Baptist Church for, um, as a, as a, a social, social resource in that area. So I think the temporary cabin was clearly unsuitable. I think there's this report to the cabin. I think we, we first of a project called the cabin, which is a much better equipped cabin. Councillor, councillor Borman?
Yeah, just to come back on that, uh, the last election, they only used the cabin for North Ward. They found it was too much, the cabin, for a whole, um, ward. So they have now got St Peter's Church and the cabin, so split the ward in two. So half the ward will go one place, half the ward will go the other place, because they do realise that having the whole ward in one place, they couldn't contend with.
And I think also, given, given the next election will be a large one, then, um, I think we need, need, need enough spaces to give people opportunities to vote easily. Uh, anybody else with comments on this? So I take it from the conversations we've just had that, that we are supportive of these proposed changes, is that? Okay, we think we're saying that. Can we go back to the recommendation again, please? So the recommendation is to consider a response to Lewis District Council's review of polling districts and polling places. And our response is that we are supportive of that review and the proposals as they affect Seaford. Is that what we're agreeing? Uh, so in terms of something to be voted on, we've considered our response. Um, can I just check with Izzy, what, what, what do you want the councillors to, to, to authorise tonight?
If someone could just propose that, um, the town council's response will be to support the recommendations.
I'll propose.
I will propose that, okay.
I think councillor Borman had her hand up first. Okay, so Cash was the first one to speak. So I think councillor Borman proposes that councillor Cash is seconding it. Um, uh, then, okay, that's all those in favour? Uh, any against, any abstaining? Right, that is carried. Right, now we're on to what's left of the items on item eleven in my agenda. Right, the exclusion of the press and the public. So I now move that in accordance with the Public Bodies' Admissions to Meeting Act nineteen sixty, the press and the public be excluded for the remainder of the meeting as the following items on the agenda concern advice from the district monitor, monitoring officer and nationally sensitive details. Uh, so someone proposed that. Councillor Borman, seconded. I think councillor Dunn got a hand up second. All those in favour, we exclude the press and the public. Uh, it's every, uh.